We'd like to welcome everybody to this, the, I would date it, October 29th meeting of the Lincoln City Council. In a moment, we'll rise for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent meditation. And during that portion, I'd like you to remember and think about the incidents that happened over the weekend, and we hope you keep those individuals involved in your prayers and thoughts. Now, let us rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read a small statement before we get started. I always forget this part. Here we are. "In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business before the Lincoln City Council is as follows: The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may then make a short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating his name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for this date nor planned for a future agenda." And before I ask the clerk to call the roll, I'd like to recognize Boy Scout Troop Number 22, who's in the chamber today, and they're here working on their citizenship and community badges. Troop 22, welcome. Yay, team. And Theresa, would you call our first item, please?
Yes, we do ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 3.
Is there anyone in the audience to speak on these agenda items?
Andrew Minchow. Veronica Chapman.
Would you please come forward? Yes.
Just state your names and addresses.
Andrew Minchow, 9630 Coy Rock Drive.
And Veronica Chapman, 2912 Ryan Street.
Welcome, guys. Thank you for coming. I see you're being appointed to a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to serve on the board.
Yeah, I'm a senior at Lincoln East High School, and I wanted to learn more about the inner workings of our community and also take a more active role in it, and so that's why I decided to apply for the position.
I'm also a senior at Lincoln East High School. I've been always just passionate about the outdoors, and I just think it's an awesome opportunity to be able to serve the community while also working with parks and stuff that I love, so.
Councilman Eskridge.
I'm gonna ask you both the same question.
Uh-oh.
Okay. What's your favorite thing about our parks?
I would just say it's all the opportunities that they present. I've spent my entire life going around to different parks. I grew up next to Mendoza Park, so I spent basically countless days of my summer there. And I've done tons of golfing at all of our city parks and our golf courses, and I just love it, so.
Good answer.
Yeah, similar to, Andrew, I think everyone in Lincoln can relate that there's a park like near and dear to their heart, whether it's in their neighborhood or close to a school that they occupy. And so I think just the sense of community it brings and also the opportunities it brings for families and friends is what my favorite part of that is.
Thank you.
Councilman Camp.
And I want to apologize for our chair. He said "you guys," and he really meant you women and men, or guys and gals, so we know. But we're educating.
Don't apologize for him. Yeah, I appreciate, yes, my gender, yeah. I'll stop talking. Councilman.
Veronica, am I getting confused, or didn't your older brother also participate in the Parks and Rec Advisory Board? Okay, that's wonderful, following a great tradition of service, so thank you both.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions from the council? This is a public hearing. Would anyone else in the chamber like to speak about this appointment?
Thank you.
Well, thank you both. We'll vote on this at the end. You may return to your seats. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shirley Peng?
Yes.
Good evening, Shirley Peng, S-H-I-R-L-E-Y-P-E-N-G, at 10011 Blue Water Bay Road, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68527.
Hi, Shirley.
Hi.
How are you? Tell us a little bit about you and your appointment.
I am an attorney with Legal Aid in Nebraska, and I just finished the Lincoln Leadership Project All class, and I am interested in serving on the Pinnacle Arena Advisory Board using my skills as an attorney to just oversee the contracts and making sure everything runs okay. I'm a big fan of the Pinnacle Arena. I've been to concerts and men's basketball. I was just at the Hoops Preview last week, and so just, our organization also participates in Project Homeless Connect, also in the Pinnacle Bank Arena, so.
It's just a couple weeks ago.
Yep, reviewed the municipal code on serving as a board, so I think I would do a fabulous job.
Excellent. Questions from the council? Would anyone else like to address this appointment? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll say thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one more. Ms. Harris, is that a reappointment?
She's, it's a related appointment.
Okay, never mind. Thank you.
David Carey with the Planning Department. Just a clarification for Maya Harris's appointment as the, we now have a vacant position on our Board of Zoning Appeals. We're required to have one member of the Planning Commission on that board, and she has agreed to do that, and as a current member of the Planning Commission, she was not required to be here for the hearing, so.
Thank you.
Sort of a reappointment, but a little bit different, so.
I was looking for a reappointment, yeah. Thank you very much.
Can you just check if the microphone is on? I'm having trouble hearing you all.
Pull them a little bit closer to you.
Is it live?
Check.
Okay, thank you.
If you'll pull them closer, yeah. And that one over there, while you're there, if you would. Maybe not.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think we're ready for a motion?
If there's no one else, we can vote on these items. Items 1A through C were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Here are a motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilwoman Christensen. Discussion of the motion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Items 1D through H were introduced by Gaylor Baird?
So moved.
Second?
Here are a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird and a second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion of the motion? Call the roll, please.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next are public hearing resolutions. Item 5A, approving the labor contract between the city and the Lincoln M-Class Employees Association for a term effective August 23rd, 2018, through August 31st, 2020.
Good afternoon, council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources, presenting this labor contract to you with LMCEA. It's a two-year agreement with the union. Some of the highlights economically is a 1% increase for the employees that are, we call a frozen classification. That means their ranges are above the market maximum, so they've been frozen. It's a continuation of what we had two years ago. And then a 2.25% increase for year one and a 2.25% increase for year two, and then a slight increase in the longevity.
Hearing none? Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to talk about this public hearing item? Seeing no one coming forward, can we go to the next agenda item?
Yes, next is 5B, accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for October 1st through the 15th, 2018.
Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to speak about item 5B? No one comes forward? Can we move on to the next agenda item?
Yes. Item 5C, approving an agreement between the Lincoln Parks and Recreation Foundation and the city establishing the Community Challenge Grant Fund to match private gifts for renovation or replacement of existing park and recreation facilities.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
Yeah, we have kind of a good news, bad news scenario this evening, in that the good news is the city has migrated its email to the cloud, which is a big improvement. The bad news is all the council members got kicked off email over the weekend, and as you know, we meet on Mondays, so some of the discussions we were having and the additional conversation about possible changes to this document were kind of brought to a halt, and what we'd like to do is move that we delay this item one more week to allow for clean redline copies to get out to everyone so that we can all be on the same page, literally, prior to the vote. And in addition, our city attorney who's been working on this is out sick today, so we have additional delay for that reason.
Second. Here are a motion and a second? There was a motion and a second, correct? Yeah, to delay one week?
One week with continued public hearing.
Thank you. Discussion of the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
If there are people here today who want to testify, if you want to, because we do have a public hearing in the audience.
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on Agenda Item 5C about the Parks Foundation? All right. Thank you very much.
All right, if not, we can vote on these two items then. Item 5A, the labor contract, was introduced by Eskridge?
So moved.
Second?
Here are a motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion of the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. 5B is the report of claims introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second?
Was it Councilwoman? Will you use that one way down? I couldn't, everybody, it, motion by Councilman Eskridge, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion of the motion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next then are our public hearing ordinance's second reading. I'll call items 6A and 6B together. They are the application of David Meisinger for a change from B3 commercial to H2 highway business on property generally located at North 44th and Q Street, and the developmental and conditional zoning agreement to allow the construction of a mini warehouse on property at North 44th and Q Street.
Members of the council, I'm Bill Blake. I'm an attorney in the Blake Austin Law Firm, 530, or excuse me, that's an old address, 301 South 13th Street in Lincoln, and I'm here on behalf, on behalf of Mr. Meisinger, who is also here to speak if necessary. Mr. Meisinger wants to facilitate construction of a warehouse building on a parcel at 44th and Q. It will actually be a group of mini warehouses in that building. This is something that's kind of new for that type of business area. It's zoned B3, and we'd like to change it to H2. Thank you. I believe the Planning Commission voted in favor of this, 8 to 0, and I don't know of any opposition to it. The Planning Department is in favor of it. There is a, the other matter that's before you to go with that is a zoning agreement, and that has some conditions that the applicant has agreed to, and I believe that's on file with the city, and we ask your approval. We are here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Councilman Eskridge, followed by Councilman Camp?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Blake. So, photos up here, tell us what we're seeing, and then I'm also wondering, do you have a sketch of the exact location?
We have a sketch. I'll let Mr. Meisinger speak to the building.
Yeah, that'd be on 44th and Q Street, which is part of, it'd be the north building and the old sports courts building. The south building is the pause for fun. This would be the north one, that will be demoed if this project goes.
That's, that's a pretty rough-looking building right now, so this is an improvement.
This would be a huge improvement.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Camp?
The building that you see, the two buildings here, were sports courts, and now one is a, I'll call it a dog daycare center.
Doggy daycare.
And the other building is not occupied, so that would be removed in the new building place.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilman Camp?
Thank you both for being here, gentlemen. My question's along the same lines, except if we could get the drawing again of the proposed building, if you could describe, you know, it looks like it's multi-storied and so forth, describe how it would be designed or utilized.
Well, the project's not mine, actually. We're trying, we're trying to sell this to the Dino Storage Units, the controlled environment, so it's, the project will be Dave Palladino's, but this is a drawing of, very similar to what it'll look like. This, this is not the identical footprint, but it's, it'll be very similar. And the way I understand it, he's been approved for one on 84th Street, and I believe this is the, the drawing for the 84th Street. It'd be very similar.
This is a three-story structure that you're seeing, and what would be put on that side is a four-story structure.
We didn't pick you up on the microphone. If you'd pull a little bit closer to the, thank you. Thanks. Councilwoman Raybold?
Exactly what is the square footage, or what is the footprint of that proposed structure on the lot?
That's a good question. I don't know. I do not know the exact footprint.
Other questions from the council? Councilman Camp?
Yeah, I'm still, I'm just still interested in, by granting this change of zoning and so forth, but what, how this is laid out, and I haven't been to the 84th facility, so.
84th isn't constructed yet, just a.
That's why I haven't been there.
That would be why.
I knew there was a reason. Yeah, just, I know that they're getting more and more of these concepts, and this looks like it has a nice design, as opposed to some of your other mini storages.
As Councilman Camp was saying, when I hear self-storage, this is not the image I see, but as you point out, this is actually a rendering of another building, the one we're talking about might not look like this, correct?
Yeah, the other building would be demoed. This would be a brand-new structure. The, the difference between this kind of storage and some of the other mini storages is this is all inside, everything, and there's, there's two, I'm pretty sure there'll be two overhead doors for loading. They drive in and unload. They wouldn't even be out and unloading outside. Everything's unloaded inside, and it's, and it's controlled climate for like files and records and things you don't want to get, you know, moisture and mold, so it's, it's designed to be air-conditioned and heated, and small lockers.
What we normally think of as mini storage facilities, we need to forget about those when we're talking about this, because this is a structure that is controlled climate and everything in one building, so that they can have controlled climate and intended to fit with the neighborhood and the type of businesses that are in that area.
That was a little more my concern. Are there other questions from the council? Councilwoman Lamb?
Sure, I do. Thank you. Thanks very much for being here. So, this isn't a done deal with Dino Storage, is that right?
Pardon me?
It's not a done deal. I mean, we're not, we're not here reviewing Dino's plan.
Well, it's, it's under purchase agreement, contingent to me getting the zoning that would allow it. It, it was under H2 back in 2015. You may recall when the dog park wanted to change it?
Yep.
And they changed mine to B3, and under B3, it didn't, it didn't permit a mini storage warehouse.
So, I guess I'm just trying to clarify that, that this plan didn't go to the Planning Commission, just the zoning change?
No, this plan did, yes.
The, the next item on the agenda has to do with the plan for the building.
Okay.
It's a zoning agreement that has essentially three items. One is that it has, needs to have some street trees along, basically along 44th Street for screening, and then it needs to be oriented, the building needs to be oriented so that what you see on the drawing faces the streets, and the third part is it needs to look pretty much like what you see.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council?
Yes, I think so.
Thank you, gentlemen. And, Mr. Carey, would you come forward?
Do I need to sign?
Yes, please.
Sign here?
Yes, please do sign.
But this, that's because there was a reservation.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, gentlemen, and.
Yes, David Carey with the Planning Department, Steve Henningston here as well. As the, the hearing started, we noticed that the materials were not attached to the online agenda, so we thought we would walk this through so that you have the best understanding of this proposal as possible. To be clear, this, this did go to the Planning Commission, so it did receive approval 8 to 0. It was on the consent agenda, so this is an item that was approved by, by the Planning Commission. Real quick, just to let you know that what this is proposing is the change of zone from B3 to H2. You'll recall perhaps, but we'll let you know that this was a, a couple years ago, this did come forward to actually change both of these properties to B3, and mainly for the point of that pause for fun use. So what is happening here is that we are in support of the change, basically, to H2. H2 is still the predominant pattern of zoning in this area. There was a lot of reason for the pause for fun to go to B3, namely, the parking requirement. Currently, it still is different. It's, it's, it's a heftier parking requirement in the H2 than in the B3, and it made sense for that use. What, what needs to happen now is this change of zone has to go back to H2 if mini storage is going to be in allowed use on the property, which we are supportive of, but the change of zone still is needed. And as was mentioned previously by the applicant, this does include a zoning agreement that has some site improvement requirements on it that they have agreed to. And with that, I'm gonna see if I missed anything, and let Steve go through some things.
No, the only thing I would add is that, as was noted, they did include an elevation that was prepared by Dino Storage, so if it is used by self-storage, it has to substantially conform with the elevation that was attached, the elevation that they were showing. Doesn't have to be the exact one, so that if, for instance, a different company goes there and wants to do self-storage, it would have to be substantially the same as, as that one drawing. That is what is included in the agreement, the zoning agreement, that would go along with the change of zone. So there, there's two requests that are paired that are as a part of this. If ultimately the self-storage backed out, they would have the ability to go with any of the other uses, the H2 uses that are allowed. The property to the east is H2, and the property on the other side of pause for fun, that area is H2 as well. The vast majority of kind of the 48th and O Street corridor going north on 48th Street, most of the properties here are zoned H2. We'd also note that part of the reason the property of the south was changed to B3 was to have parking, lesser parking standard. We're actually working on a text amendment right now that would change the H2's text parking standard to match that at B3, so you wouldn't have to have these little pockets of, of B3 in the future. We think that'll help with the continuing redevelopment to the 48th and O corridor.
And thinking of one more thing, just to let you know, so the Dino Storage, there is an approved project up on North 84th Street that is, I just noticed, is just now under construction. I believe the elevator tower has, has been built, but very similar projects, not the same, but similar projects as far as the type of building and the elevations, as Steve said, are part of the application.
Councilman, Councilman Camp? Yes?
Assuming we approve these two items on the zoning and then the project for the mini storage, is there any other follow-up, or just through administrative process through the Planning Commission at this point, when they get to the design and, for example, they represent it on landscape and so forth?
But, yeah, and there, there is, in the sense of that the requirement is that the building needs to be built generally to the specifications of what the images that were provided as part of the application. So we have those images to speak to, whenever, the images that were shown by the applicant earlier. So those, the expectation is that this, besides the fact that there is part of the zoning agreement, some specifics about street trees and lot layout, so that's, those, those all have to be abided by before they would move forward.
But those would be reviewed administratively at a time of a building permit. It isn't anticipated to come back through Planning Commission or City Council.
Yep.
No, and I appreciate that, and this drawing is of only three stories, and I think they said they want to do four stories, so, but it looks like it would fit within that area. I know you've got professional office, medical facilities, and others as well, so.
Right.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Other questions from the council?
Yeah.
Councilman Eskridge?
So, since we didn't have it on our, the, the documents on our agenda for today, were there any, was there any opposition to this proposal?
No.
No? Okay.
I, when we finish, I'm sorry. I, the presentation was nice, and I understood about the climate-controlled building. That's not one of the restrictions here. This doesn't come to, if we rezone and the building doesn't get developed, the, another self-storage unit or other, what, B2 could come in there and build anything else? I'm sorry, what would be the restrictions on the zoning? I guess is what I'm asking. We might not see this. What else could we possibly see?
The change of zone will allow uses to be that fall within, by right, and within H2.
H2, thank you.
Could you give us? Could you give us some examples, refresh our memories on zoning?
I'm gonna allow my expert to do that.
Sure, I mean, so it's very similar to the, the B3 type of uses. You could have retail, you could have fast-food restaurants, you could have convenience stores. The H probably allows a few more things. It would, for instance, allow a contractor to, to locate on the site, as well as things like the, the self-storage. So it's a little more intensive than the, the B3, but it includes all those kind of retail uses that could, could locate there by right today.
Thank you. Councilman Gaylord-Bird.
Found some attachments online from the first reading, so I do have a question about just conditions of approval that were modified. Can you just explain what those changes were and why they were made? And did that come out of Planning Commission, or was that just working with the department?
I can probably address that. It was basically, as we had, it was kind of nuancing the words, basically. We wanted to make sure that there was gonna be street trees added on both 44th Street and on Q. There is an existing sidewalk there, so we wanted to make sure there was enough room for the street trees. So we just revised the wording to say, you know, that basically, normally, we would have eight feet or more. If the existing condition is such that there's only about seven feet, okay, we'll accept that the sidewalk, since it's there already today, is seven feet, there's still probably enough room to do the street trees. But if it's only four or five feet from the curb, well, then the sidewalk would have to be moved. That was one thing, because adding some street trees, you see a lot of street trees in that area, but this particular building, being an older one, it doesn't have any street trees. And that would happen regardless of the use, or whether it's retail, restaurant, those street trees would be added. The second condition, then, is basically just a, a nuancing the words to make it clear that it would be substantially in conformance with the concept as shown.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Other discussion from the council? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this agenda item? Thank you. Seeing no one else come up, thank you, gentlemen. Teresa, I think we're ready to go to our next item.
We'll go to items 6C through G. They are Comp Plan Conformance 1-8009, declaring approximately 13,163 square feet of the Missouri Pacific Trail as surplus property, generally located between South 95th and 97th Streets on the north side of A Street. Annexation 1-8001, annexing approximately 103.07 acres of property generally located at South 93rd and A Street. Change of Zone 1-8006, application of Heritage Lakes for a change from AG Agricultural to R3 Residential at South 93rd and A Street. Approval of a conditional annexation and zoning agreement for residential development located generally northwest of the intersection of 98th and A Street, and the appeal of Chris Kidwell of Planning Commission's approval of special permit 1-8021, application of Heritage Lakes, to develop a community unit plan consisting of 290 residential dwelling units on approximately 96.18 acres with requested waivers on property generally located at South 93rd and A Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston, H-U-S-T-O-N. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of the Coalition of Property Owners have come together to bring this annexation to you tonight. The coalition members include, we have two phases of coalition members. The first phase, Phase 1 includes Heritage Lakes, BCLANC, B&amp;J Partnership, David Rollis, and East O Realty. East O Realty is the landlord of the Hillcrest Country Club and the clubhouse, and the grounds around the clubhouse would be a part of this annexation. It's about 10 of the 170 acres that East O Realty owns, but they're all members of the first phase of the coalition. And then the second phase of the coalition is comprised of Chris Kidwell and, and Homestead Acres, Inc. I know we have several members of the coalition in the audience today, and also with me is Brad Marshall from Molson Associates, if you have any questions on the engineering. The annexation that is in front of you includes, the Phase 1 ground is approximately 100 acres, and the Phase 2 ground is approximately 77 acres. The coalition members recognize the collective benefit of coming together and working together for the annexation, and the common interest to deal with the infrastructure and how to pay for that infrastructure. There's really three or four principal agenda items that we wanted to talk to you about tonight, the first of which is a comprehensive plan conformity issue on a declaration of surplus property. This property is traversed by the Mopac East Bike Trail, which now the city has responsibility for, and the surplus property designation would designate approximately three tenths of an acre that is owned by the city as part of an exchange with the coalition members, so we can swap three-tenths parcels to really benefit the trail and to benefit the drainage in the area. The coalition members would dedicate or exchange with the city some additional right-of-way adjacent to A Street to help benefit the trail, and likewise, the city would exchange a, a three-tenths of an acre parcel to the coalition to aid in some drainage areas. The annexation, as I mentioned, in totality would total 177 acres, and under the city's comprehensive plan, obviously, this property is located in the Stevens Creek Drainage Basin. The property is contiguous to the existing city limits, both on the north, excuse me, in three ways, on the north, on the west, and the south. The infrastructure is ready to be delivered to the area, including sanitary sewer, water, and the street improvements. And this annexation is consistent with the annexation policy as embodied in the comprehensive plan because of that Stevens Creek Drainage Basin. The second item, or really, the third item on the agenda is, is the change of zone, and I think, I guess I had those reversed. This is the, the change of zone that did not, and does not include the Hillcrest Country Club. The annexation does include the Hillcrest Country Club clubhouse area, but the change of zone is a smaller area. It isn't 100 acres, it's approximately 95 acres. The change of zone is sought to change the zoning of the property from the AG to the R-3 district, and it, this property is shown in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan as a Tier 1 area for annexation. The future land use plan of the comprehensive plan shows urban density at this area, and the R3 zone sought is consistent with the comprehensive plan for this Phase 1 area. The Phase 2 area would come forward with annexation and change of zone at some point in the future, when those properties desired to be developed. The fourth item on your agenda is the conditional annexation agreement. It was four months ago, on June 20th in, in 2018, the Planning Commission did approve the change of zone, or recommended for approval, the change of zone, the annexation. Obviously, the annexation agreement was not in front of the Planning Commission, is that, that's part of, not part of their scope of authority, but, but the, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of everything else. The conditional annexation agreement deals with the development cost for the sanitary sewer. The sanitary sewer for this area in the short term is to be dealt with, with a lift station and forced main improvements, and later, the city has the ability to construct a gravity-based line that serves this area, and the annexation agreement would require the decommissioning of the lift station and the forced main improvements, the lift station primarily. The annexation agreement also deals with the intersection improvements that would be required at 93rd and A Street. A roundabout will be constructed at that location. It's presently designated as 94th Street, so it's being relabeled as 93rd Street. I think it's more consistent with the, the sequencing in that area. And A Street does also include a right-in, right-out turn on the south side of A Street at 91st Street. The third item that is addressed in the annexation agreement deals with the enhancement of the pedestrian trail with additional sidewalks, really using the trails in amenity within the neighborhood, and we think that's a key ingredient for potential homebuyers in this property. The last item on the, or the next item in the conditional annexation agreement deals with the potential grading of 98th Street, and 98th Street would be graded, really, from the A Street limit all the way up to the northern area of the property, the northern boundary line, to, to deal with some excess dirt that is in that area and provide a benefit to the city in that regard. The, I guess I want to stop there and see if you have any questions before you go into the special permit.
Questions from the council? I'm sorry, Councilman.
Yes, I know there's prospective development here for residential law. What, how many citizens or residents could conceivably find lodging here, homes here?
Very good question. The, the community unit plan that was approved envisioned a count of 290 homes as a part of the Phase 1 development, and that, that's the 100 acres that is really being part of the Phase 1 development. It's approximately three dwellings per acre. You know, the, the comprehensive plan suggests a density of five dwelling units per acre. In fact, the design standard under the CUP standards for the R3 zone would permit almost seven dwelling units per acre. Because of the topography and some of the wetland challenges, the density is really proposed at a three-dwelling unit per acre standard. There's additional, that CUP does provide for additional density of another 100 units for the Phase 1 ground. When you get to the Phase 2 ground, that's another 77 acres, which I would envision another 200-plus dwelling units. So I think all in, this is gonna be approximately 500 dwelling units that could be added to the city on a relatively pain-free basis for the city. There, there's no cost to the city as a part of this process.
I did notice you assigned them to my council district, so I don't know about, so I have more constituents to help.
You have more neighborhoods to walk. There's high demand in this area for housing.
Councilman Gaylord-Bird, you got?
Thanks, Mr. Houston. You mentioned a lift station, and in the past, those have maybe short-term solutions with longer-term consequences unintended, as people move in and out of residential developments and don't understand what's coming with their purchase of their home. Can you talk to us about how, in this proposal, you'll ward off some of those unintended consequences for future homeowners and the city?
Sure. Well, and, and the primary method that we're looking at is obviously, the city, a great cost to the city is extending the Stevens Creek main trunk from 95th and A Street to, excuse me, 95th and O Street to approximately 98th and, and A Street. And we intended initially to be able to connect to that line. Because of the challenge and priorities in, in the CIP, we had anticipated trying to designate that potential connection for payment within the next couple of years, and recognizing the city's budget is challenged in that regard. We thought the, then, that the way to permit this project to move forward is to utilize, there is a 2004 lift station policy that the city has adopted that does permit the use of a lift station in a temporary basis as long as the area will be served by granite gravity sewer, and this area will be served by gravity sewer, when, and the city is able to construct that additional cost, or that additional line at the city's cost. We ultimately came up with the solution to use the lift station and the forced main, all at the cost of the developer to remove the uncertainty that was present for both the city and the developer. And the timing of, that uncertainty of timing is a real risk for the developer, and we thought in the short term, it's better for us to proceed with a lift station that we can control the, the timing on and let the city deal with the, the cost of the additional connection when budgets would permit.
Thank you.
And the annexation agreement does require the coalition to deal with all the decommissioning costs to take the lift station out of service. So ultimately, that will be taken care of by the development.
Councilman Eskridge, you initially had a question? Did you have additional? You wanna think about it for a second?
Yeah, at some point, would like to ask staff about, about this plan, but go ahead.
Councilman Camp.
Yes, Mr. Houston, talking about the decommissioning of the lift station. When the developers, whoever that is, plats this and so forth, are the sewage systems designed so that they can be more easily converted to the cities?
Yeah, and it's trying to be designed so that the majority of the sanitary sewer improvements will be permanent improvements, and just the forced main and the lift station will be, that's the intent, just, just those improvements would be temporary, so that a lot of that infrastructure is not wasted.
Thank you. We're trying to cover about five items, the same, five agenda items at the same time. Are you done with your presentation, or did you have some more?
I, I would like to talk about the, the special permit.
Sounds good, let's go.
The special permit, as I mentioned, was approved by the Planning Commission on June 20th, and I was put in an unusual position to actually appeal a yes that I got from the Planning Commission, which I don't like to do, obviously. I like to take yes for an answer and leave the room.
And move on.
But we're in a position primarily that, that, and what I'm gonna put on the overhead is the actual CUP, the Hillcrest CUP. It was approved by the Planning Commission, and the only issue that we had, the only issue, and I didn't find out in time for the Planning Commission hearing, but as I mentioned, we have two phases of annexation. We have the 100 acres of about five properties, and then we have the Phase 2 properties, and there is one issue dealing with a street connection. This is called Signature Drive. I'm gonna focus in on that if I can. The street connection between this property is a member of the coalition, and this property is a member of the Phase 2 of the coalition. Signature Drive is, as you can see, is, is platted, or at least shown on the CUP as a connected street from the Rollis property, as a part of the Phase 1 property, and shows the connection to the Kidwell property on, on the west. The Kidwell property is the Phase 2 property, and the engineering and planning has not been done for that property. But we have a regulation in our subdivision regulations that requires...
Move out a little bit now, yeah.
...puts a maximum block length, yeah, of 1,320 feet, the maximum block length, except where there's man-made barriers and where there are natural barriers. Here, we have a natural barrier on the Kidwell property that was not readily available. And I want to get this map properly oriented with A Street at the top of the map. Can y'all see that? But A Street at the top of the map, this shows the Kidwell property, which is located west of the Phase 1 annexation area. Kidwell property has this lake, it has wetlands in area, it has an LES substation, and it has an overhead power lines. The combination of those factors, primarily the lake, the wetland area, presents a natural barrier that Mr. Kidwell cannot commit to make that street connection. Now, the challenge was, the Kidwell property's not part of the CUP, and that's why I filed the appeal, so that we, we could have the discussion at the City Council. What I had sought was, because of those, those barriers, I had sought to allow Mr. Rollis, at his election, to rather than showing Signature Drive as a through street, to actually plaid it as a cul-de-sac. And I had filed, or at least presented to you, a motion to amend that would permit that. The reason, and, and obviously, I'm not trying to create a new procedure, I'm trying to deal with existing language in the ordinances and the subdivision regulations because of the language of the natural barrier. One of the, obviously, solutions for Mr. Kidwell's, when and if his property is developed and he brings his own community, you know, plan to you, he can make the same argument, that his property has this natural barrier that will prevent that street connection because you can't build the street where the pond is, right? That is not gonna be a possibility. What the natural result of that would be is that the street would be barricaded in perpetuity at his property line, which we didn't think that was the proper result. We were trying to think ahead a little bit, and we thought at least give Mr. Rollis about a six-month window to see if we can work out some other solution, because Mr. Rollis is a part of the CUP, he would be coming forward with his final plat in the next four to six months, I would think, at which time he would have the option of either plating Signature Drive as a through street or plating as a cul-de-sac. And that's what we were trying to do, is defer the decision down the road to allow the, the property owners to try to come together to reach some other conclusion, other than just constructing Signature Drive to be, end in a barricaded street at the property line. So, obviously, the solution is not an ideal one, but it was one that was forced upon us because of the, the phasing that we have in the annexation, and I was not aware of the physical limitations on the Kidwell property when the CUP was really put together. Factually, that is what's in front of you on the, on the appeal of the special permit, seeking to allow the, the parties to reach some agreement, and within six months, Mr. Rollis can make that decision on whether to plaid it as a through street or plaid it as a cul-de-sac. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Let's start with Councilman Raybold.
Tom, you know, were there any street overlays or engineering studies showing indeed that the pond is in direct, the direct course or route of the street? I couldn't make it out on some of the attachments that were provided.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, very good point. You'll see this area on the overhead. This is the area right in here where Signature Drive would be built. It's right at the north tip of the pond, right within the wetland area, and that is reflected here, and it is also reflected in the original drawing. This is Signature Drive, and this is the wetland and pond area of Mr. Kidwell property located on the west. You'll see Signature Drive is right there, north of the pond, in the wetland area. Now, I acknowledge that the Kidwell property is not in the CUP, and it's not in front of you tonight, but we raised the question now so that no one can ever say that Mr. Kidwell did not raise the issue when it was presented back when the CUP was approved.
Well, I guess the question is, why must we approve it now? You've raised the issue, but I guess I would have preferred to see maybe some engineering drawings showing that there is the possibility of that road continuing through that area, or the improbability of that road continuing through that area?
You highlight the challenge of having two-phase annexation, in the two-phase change of zone in the CUP. Ultimately, I'm confident that the Kidwell property, Mr. Kidwell, will develop his property. It's about 70 acres on the south side of A Street. A lot of it on the southern area is fully developable, will be very nice residential neighborhoods. Some of this property on the north side does have some of the wetland challenges that are, there's a big grade differential between A Street and the surrounding ground out on the east edge of town. We raised the issue now to avoid, or at least potentially avoid, a barricaded street at that property line, at least raise it as a possibility.
Councilman Camp?
Yes, Mr. Houston, and maybe Mr. Marshall should come up too on this to help on the question I have, and it follows on what Ms. Raybold was asking. I'll let you introduce yourself, Mr. Marshall.
Brad Marshall at the Olson, 601 P Street, Suite 200.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What I'm leading up to is, a little bit of what Mr. Houston talked about is, with the wetlands and so forth, isn't the, I'm kind of summarizing, maybe the probability is that there'd never be a connection through. And I'm not necessarily, I'm not objecting to that, but if that's the reality, I respect your wanting to perhaps solve some things now, but, you know, if it really isn't buildable across there, and maybe, and I guess I'd like you to address that, then, you know, granting the waiver now, or just understanding there will not be a road there because of the barriers.
I think the question for Mr. Kidwell is, and him not being part of the CUP right now, is that we haven't engaged him fully to see what his layout of land's going to be, what particular uses are going to be across that property, and what that road may or may not lead to and be a benefit to him. From an engineering perspective, we cross roads across drainage ways and floodplain and environmental hazards all the time. It is, it's possible. I think the question is here, is that connection a burden to Mr. Kidwell, in the manner that it will be hard for him to overcome in the future when he does decide to develop the property? He did engage us when some of these, when these issues started to arise, when we started seeing the connections, or seeing where it would connect to on his property, and how that would impact him. So we did do an environmental study. Tom is showing the delineation of those wetlands. We do know that there is floodplain issues to deal with, and so we do know there will be mitigation on both pieces. And so when he starts considering the development of that property, like I said, will there be a burden? Will there be such an impact to those wetlands that he has to mitigate that on his property that will cause him to really be locked into a position, not have much flexibility? I think that's the real question that he's trying to buy some time and figure out with another coalition member here, what the best way to go is.
Councilman Raybold, go, yes, go.
So you did say that there were some environmental impact studies done concerning the wetlands, and I guess is that part of one of our attachments? I haven't seen it.
It's the map here that Tom is showing. So this is a delineation. Everything is green, is actually a wetland feature, so the grass and reeds, and then the water features are shown in blue. We do know that then in some capacity, whatever the road alignment is, if it's pushed upright adjacent to the LES substation, or if it's pulled back such that he tries to, I don't know, maybe try to get the best alignment to minimize the impacts, we know that it's going to be pretty significant from that perspective.
Again, I didn't see like a street overlay, or a proposed street overlay, and how it lines up with the wetlands. I don't know if that's something that is easily provided to us. I don't believe, do we vote on this stuff today? No, okay.
Next week.
It certainly could be provided. I, you know, we didn't do a complete overlay of the two. This is that cul-de-sac, and where that would extend, you can see the LES property line here, and that green line, that green line is actually the floodway. And so we haven't overlaid all the different layers, if you will, but we do know whatever route that is taken across that property, there will be a road that crosses it, and there will have to be permitting that would have to go through the core engineers. FEMA would be included as far as floodplain impacts and to that property. So I think Chris is just trying to, Mr. Kidwell is trying to determine, you know, if he has to build three or four or 500 feet of a roadway that has little value, I guess, and significant impacts to water floodplain and to environmental pieces, that he just comes forward, when he does come forward with his portion of the CUP, he's got the best plan in place.
So what you're saying is, the environmental impact study you have is just the drawing, correct?
Yes, the, what was shown there in green for his property. There's some balance here, because he hasn't completely engaged us on the engineering portion of the work, you know, so he hasn't, he hasn't, he hasn't done any engineering, he hasn't started any of the CUP because he has that part, that second phase of annexation.
So we don't know for certain, surely we don't?
We do. I mean, planning has made that a condition, that the road does connect, and we do know that it will impact those, that portion of the property from wetlands and floodplain. That is a certainty.
Yeah, that is a condition of approval with the CUP, and that's why we appealed the CUP to you, so we could at least raise this issue. We saw a problem coming, we were trying to address it in advance.
Councilman Camp?
Yes, Mr. Houston, you showed that double cul-de-sac there, kind of a T situation. If we vote to remove that condition that the planning commission had, is the likelihood that you'll have those two cul-de-sacs constructed, so there's no, then it wouldn't be the barricades or anything, it would just be plan that will stop the first CUP this way, or the first part of the whole project.
I would, I think the chances are highly likely, more likely than not. I mean, one of the challenges with this property is, as you can see, this corner, kind of isolated from everything else. It's, there's this drainage way that comes through here, so the only access would be to 91st Street. Now, some developers don't like that, but I think it is likely, due to the other potential costs, that this right-in, right-out on 91st Street would be the only access. You know, we have another subdivision regulation that limits a dead-end street to contain no more than 40 homes. This has 20 lots on it, so that's not a problem. We're not at risk on that issue on the subdivision regulation. But I think it is more likely than not that this is the selection that the Rollis developer, the Rollis property developer would make.
Councilman Gaylord Barrett?
Complicated, so I just want to make sure I understand. If we were to allow the flexibility to build in this manner, because the annexation timing is not, you know, simultaneous, is there still a possibility that a through road would be built, or would, if this gets built, are we going to end up with the two cul-de-sac design?
I think the two cul-de-sac design means that the connection road does not get built.
Okay.
But, you know, from a construction standpoint, it'd be easy to remove the bulb and connect the street, but I think a lot of decisions would have been made by property owners in buying homes that...
That's my concern, is that if you set expectations one way, and then a road is altered, that that would be problematic for people who aren't expecting it, and how is that communicated? So...
I think, I think if the cul-de-sac were constructed, it would be a permanent improvement.
And so when would that decision be made?
I think all the Phase One properties intend to move quickly. I think they want to move forward as quickly as possible, because there's a high demand for these kinds of lots, and I think that they would be in a position to be final plating within the next four to six months. And you'll see the motion to amend, the language that I included indicated that the final decision had to be made in the final plat for this property. We think that it will be four to six months. It is a complicated issue, and it would have been easier for us not to raise the issue, but we thought it was important enough to avoid, you know, the construction of a permanent barricade that would never be connected on a through-street basis because of some of the physical challenges, the man-made barriers, and the natural barriers.
So is there never going to, I mean, is there going to be further investigation of whether or not this through-street could be built? If we don't approve this, you will be investigating that, or are you saying it won't work, period? There'll be a permanent barricade. Instead of a permanent barricade, let's have a cul-de-sac? I just want to understand our options.
Yeah, yeah. I can't say never. I can't say for a definite certainty that the street would not be constructed. Mr. Kidwell may ascertain on his own volition that it's a beneficial street to have. It may improve the marketability of his property. We're not there yet. So I think it is likely that it wouldn't be built, but I think Mr. Kidwell is going to have to go through that process as his property develops.
You said likely to be built, the through road would be likely to be built, or the cul-de-sac?
I think the cul-de-sac would be likely to be built.
Other questions from the council? Mr. Houston, do you have more, or?
That is all. That's plenty.
Yeah, that was, my head hurts a little. Councilman Ashridge, I know we're in a public hearing session, but you had some questions for staff. Would you like to have those answered now?
That would be good.
And, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Donna Garden, Public Works and Utilities.
It's Ms. Garden. We don't like lift stations. Why do we have to, or do we have to have a lift station in this case, and if so, why?
Generally, I would say, no, we don't like lift stations, that's true. In this case, though, this particular development would be served by main from our gravity sewer, but it's not in our CIP until the year 2021, '22. And in order to facilitate this project, the only option for us is to do a temporary lift station. It does meet the requirements of the policy in that this project is in our CIP, and the development is providing funds for operating costs that the city would operate that lift station during that time period.
Would there be any other ways to fund the work that would need to do to connect to the sewer system without doing the lift station?
We are very, very limited in funds this next two years because of the big projects that we're putting in. Stevens Creek is going in right now. We really have been pinching and saving to get done what the projects that we have already promised in these two years without raising rates, any additional than what we already have agreed to for this next biennium. So the only place it really fits in our budget right now is in that time period. I don't see any way to get it to achieve this in the timeframe that the developer wants to go forward, other than using a lift station.
This development will produce impact fees.
It will.
But not to the level needed to do what needs to be done.
Not for wastewater, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Garden? Councilman Gaylord Barrett?
Could you provide some perspective and context on the costs associated with the lift station temporarily and city infrastructure at a later time? We heard a little bit on that, but I'd like to get the city's background.
The developer is paying for the entire cost of building the lift station and the force main to utilize the lift station. They are also providing a bond for four years of operating costs, because the city will be required to operate that lift station. That's at our recommendation. They were also required to build in accordance with our standards for lift stations. We have the, there is some flexibility in terms of funding. There is 10 years allowed for in this agreement to have that lift station in place. The actual capital improvement cost of the inner basin line is 1.5 million, so that's what we'd be looking at for an investment down the road in 2021, '22.
And would there be any specific cost impact to the members of this particular development? Any differential impact relative to the rest of city taxpayers? In the past, with lift stations, when new infrastructure has become necessary, homeowners associations have had to pay more. Is that because it's been outside city limits, or is, can you just speak to what the future impact financially would be, not just this 1.5 million, but to whom specifically?
Well, obviously, the operating costs, and I'm sure those costs would be passed on in the form of whatever terms of sales or anything that go on in that development area. There is the cost of building a lift station that will also be included in that, that those people will pay. In terms of impact fees, that does contribute to our wastewater funds. But other than that, the overall main is a structure that we pay for as a whole, as a city, we do that throughout the city.
All ratepayers, not specifically.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Garden, thank you very much. Mr. Carey, would you come and help us understand what's going on here? Help me, everybody else I think understands it, but I'm a little lost.
Thank you, I'm going to employ some other help as well. Mr. Hendrickson is here as well, he's been involved in this from the very beginning. I think it's important to put some context into what we are being asked to do here tonight, as well as the process that we've taken to get here. The waiver that's being requested is a, I would suggest to you that it's procedurally out of order, in the sense of you're being asked to vote on something that was not heard by the planning commission, and the way that this, our system is set up is that those types of items, including waivers, should be heard by the planning commission, so that they can weigh in on it and inform you of their position on that, and have the full discussion as part of that process. If you would ask me this evening what I would suggest to do, I would suggest to you that if you are going to entertain acting on the motion to amend for the waiver, I would recommend denial of that, but approve the special permit that was, what was acted on by the planning commission. So separating out the request for the waiver, we are in support of the package that's before you. So if you are inclined to consider the waiver, I would recommend that you send that waiver back to the planning commission so that they follow that process that is in place, so that they take that into consideration, bring it forward to you under the normal circumstances. That also could provide some time for ongoing discussions between the property owners that are trying to come up with an agreement here. Under that scenario, that this, this package of items would come back to you, apparently on the December 12th for hearing again. So that's the timeframe.
It would be at the planning commission, December 12th. It would be then back before the city council in January.
Sorry, in January, the December 12th planning commission hearing. So that is what we would recommend to you. Steve has a lot of great information on why we still believe that the street itself should be connected and should be planned for. The benefit of these large proposals that have large properties coming forward is that we can master plan these properties, and this is a very good example of what we're talking about when we can master plan. We can make these connections known in advance. We believe that physically, this connection can be done. It does have to have a lot of engineering done. It's not like there is a foregone conclusion that it will be simple, but it is something that we do very often in a lot of different types of scenarios and different developments. So this is not out of the ordinary for what we're proposing for you to accept. And I think I'll hand it off to Steve to talk about those details.
Sure. So basically, what I've put back on here is an exhibit from the proposal, because actually, this connection was discussed many months ago. Partly what we have is today, this is the actual floodway. As I might note, the area that we're talking about here, just south of the LES substation, is actually floodplain. It was noted that it was floodway. The dark blue is actually the floodway. So this connection, the street itself, would be generally outside of the floodplain and outside, or just catching the very edge of the wetlands. So the street connection itself... the very edge of the wetlands. So the street connection itself, as it was proposed, would be outside of the Flood Plain generally and just off the edge of the flood, of the wetlands. Now, what is being proposed already is, there's already one connection that is going to have to cross the Flood Way, the Flood Plain, and impact wetlands. It's very typical when you see developments that there has to be some part of mitigation for wetlands and impact on the Flood Plain. So that is not something that is unusual with development. In this particular development, we actually discussed, there was a very narrow area here where we could have connected Signature Drive down to Reserve Lane and connected in with the rest of the neighborhood. But when we talked about that connection, the developer said instead, Olson's representing Marshall, representing the Wallace property here, said, "Well, we'll instead have this connection over to the west. That way, there'll be two ways in and out to get to this development." And so we agreed, rather than trying to look at another crossing here that would have been more expensive than going to the west, we agreed we won't have this crossing of the actual Flood Way. Instead, we'll have the connection to the west. And so for many months, that was the assumption that the connection was going to be to the west. And the developer of this property, Mr. Rollis, agreed to have that road go in and stub to the west. It's very typical that you have roads that come forward and stub. Later, when they came back after the planning commission and said, "Well, the property owner to the west, Mr. Kidwell, a part of our coalition doesn't agree with that connection," we talked about the reasons why, and we did talk about having something that would actually defer the action, where we said, "Okay, this area here, it won't be final-platted. The decision on, will be instead, whenever the property to the west comes forward and that connection is finally decided, then Mr. Rollis can go forward and final-plat his property." But Mr. Rollis didn't want to agree to defer the action. So instead, the motion in front of you does not defer the action for six months. It makes the final decision that that will be a cul-de-sac, and Mr. Rollis would then have the legal right to go forward and build the two cul-de-sacs. And in particular to those two cul-de-sacs, as David had mentioned, the street connection was never, the deletion of it was never reviewed. We never got the chance to talk to Lincoln Fire and Rescue or police in terms of having only one way in and out. And I'll take a little bit issue in terms of, Mr. Houston was correct, there is a standard about having a cul-de-sac with no more than 40 units on it, and this one would have 17. But that's typically a cul-de-sac within a neighborhood. So when you have a cul-de-sac that you close, for instance, because you have to do street maintenance, well, people could park on the adjacent local street because temporarily they can't get back to their houses. Instead, this is off an arterial street. So if there is ever some type of a disruption on 91st Street where we have to go in and repave it in the future, the turn lanes need to be redone, the people would not only not have a way into their neighborhood, they wouldn't have anywhere to park nearby. They would have to probably park down here along Reserve Lane and kind of walk around the open space to try to get back in. So we think it's a very different circumstance in terms of having only one way in and out when that one way in and out is on an arterial street. And so we think from an emergency services and also looking long-term in terms of the street maintenance, it's really undesirable to have a one-way in and out solely from the arterial street versus it being on a little cul-de-sac within the neighborhood. And so, again, I would also note, yes, this street connection, as it's shown here, would have the LES substation on one side. So you would have lots developed on the other side, but you'd have something that's not participating in the cost on the north side. That's very similar to the street connection we have here. It comes in, it crosses the Flood Plain, and there's lots, no lots on either side. And we have that in many developments where you have to go cross something, or you go next to something, and you only get the lots platted on one side. So in this area, if the street connection were made to the west, potentially, they could come back in and develop lots on the south side of that backing up to the pond. The pond is an artificial pond that was developed by Mr. Kidwell and his father many decades ago. And so it is not inconceivable that they would decide to try to mitigate some of the wetlands in the very tip of the Flood Plain and have some very nice lots on the south side of that street to help mitigate the cost of the fact that there's an LES substation on the north side. Matter of fact, all along this area, they are indeed croaching into the Flood Plain and having to mitigate the impact on that Flood Plain because they want to develop lots backing up to that drainage way. So it's really for all of those reasons together in terms of having those type of street connections, allowing for these people. There's an elementary school to the south that they have a way within the neighborhood to get to the elementary school and the rest of the neighborhood without every day having to go in and out on the arterial street just to try to get south to their future elementary school and being developed by LPS. So it's all of those types of things, trying to look out for the future residents of this area, that we would recommend keeping the connection. And again, since this was not reviewed by the planning commission, we think if you were to approve it, it should first go back to the planning commission.
Councilman Kemp had some questions?
Yes. Mr. Hendrickson, would you put that photograph back on? Okay, maybe, thank you. When you compare that to where you were showing the lots and so forth, it raises a couple of things. Number one, where they had houses on either side of the east part of that Flood Way, Flood Plain, it was just the backyards that were there. If you're suggesting that a street go through, it can't go over LES property, and I guess I'd be curious, what is the distance between the LES property and that light blue area?
This area in here, Brad Marshall can verify it, it was at least the 60 to 70, the right-of-way is 60 feet wide. So it was at least 60 feet wide because the street right-of-way itself would be outside of the edge of it. So yes, in this area here, as it continued, the street, the LES easement is actually running north-south, and so the street would go underneath that easement, which happens all over the city, that you have to have streets that run underneath the overhead power line. So the street would continue this way, and you would be generally looking at lots that would be on the south side of that street. You would have to decide as part of the development, do you go to shorten the pond that exists there today in order to add an adjacent lot, or the street goes past the pond and then you start adding the lots once you get west of the pond itself?
I just can't conceive where, right now, the pond would be where the houses would be, which is different than on the east portion of the first CUP, that people would want to put a lot there. I think it's very impractical. And so if you've got barely enough for the right-of-way, you're going to be losing quite a bit of property, and I think it would affect the first CUP as well.
The connection didn't really have any impact on the Rollis property itself. The street would continue in here. What I was saying is, is that once you got past the pond, you potentially then would have three or four lots that would be past it. I would also note, particularly these kinds of created ponds, it's quite typical that we see the entire pond be removed as a part of the development. Now, this one is, having been designated as a couple of acres of wetland, I don't suspect the entire pond would be removed. But certainly, it would not be out of the ordinary to see somebody come in as a part of a development and potentially reshape the pond to match better their development and potentially change the northern edge of that pond.
I appreciate your concerns and those of the planning department. It just doesn't seem to pass common sense to require a road there. And I mean, we've got other places around town where they've just got the barricades, and it's just never going to be built. I would think it would allow these developments to proceed better, and even Mr. Kidwell and his design to maybe have backyards that would front up to the LES area, but-
I would just make a comment about that, just to be clear. This road would not necessarily limit what could happen on that parcel. It determines that there is a roadway connection east and west, which it would be in support of, and our policy of trying to have those interconnected streets, especially when we're planning out a neighborhood that doesn't exist yet. So we feel like that property still has basically full potential for development. And I think that's mainly what Steve was trying to make the point about, is that just because of what's exactly there today does not mean it's exactly how it needs to be laid out in the future. So that the street itself, the connection brings with it more benefit to the neighborhood than it would limitation on the development of that property. And that's the position that we're taking at this time.
I guess I respectfully disagree. I could see having a cul-de-sac on Mr. Kidwell's side that would have lots that would go up there, because you've got that whole LES line across there. I could see a cul-de-sac coming down and then giving houses on both sides and maybe an extra deep parcel on that neckway, but-
Other questions from the council? I need a little bit of clarification. The waiver is 6G, right? And that's kind of what we're talking about now?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're focusing-
The annexation that we're discussing as part of these five items, the portions on the east side of the cul-de-sac aren't included in this today, in this portion. Is that fair to say? We're annexing portions, but not-
It's a package, so we vote on it next week.
You are annexing and rezoning everything within this property.
Okay.
You're, at this point, not annexing the property or rezoning to the west. It is a part of the coalition, so the annexation agreement covers that property. The lift station will serve that property if it moves forward with development in the next three or four years. But this is the area of the actual special permit, the change of zone, and the annexation. So what we're pointing out is, the motion to amend would be making the decision on that street connection now, as it is drafted. It doesn't defer the action. It sets it now.
Great.
Councilman Christiansen?
Does the city council have the authority to take up this action without referring back to the planning commission?
Our instructions and guidance from council has told us that this action would be out of order of what the normal process would be.
I just asked you if we have the authority to do it.
And I would ask Tim-
I thought it was out of order.
I would ask Tim to come forward and explain that.
Mr. C., would you come forward and help us?
I think the answer is yes. I think the council can make this decision today. Is it in typical order? No. But can, the question is, does the council have the authority? And I think the answer to that is yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council?
For clarification, we're not voting on these items today at all.
Correct.
Okay.
And having, thank you very much for that. This is part of the public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this agenda item? Sorry for the delay.
Hi, my name is Terry Nedden Rip. My wife and I live at 550 Anthony Lane, and I'm currently president of the Hillcrest Heights Neighborhood Association. And one part of the noted development located just to the south of the Hillcrest Heights neighborhood and north of A Street, that's the area that my comments have to do with tonight. And following our neighborhood annexation, Roger Severn and representatives from our neighborhood association have spoken numerous times. The teamwork between Roger and us as an existing neighborhood has been positive, and we've appreciated having a voice as the development planning has gone forward. The two street changes being proposed by Roger in the area just to the, to our south will be good for his development, and the changes will benefit our neighborhood. The proposed street layout will promote traffic flow south to A Street instead of north through residential areas, including the Hillcrest Heights neighborhood. Our neighborhood is solidly in support of these street changes. And finally, I'd just like to note that, that these proposed street changes have been supported by the planning commission and Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to testify on this agenda items? Thank you. So anyone else coming forward? Mr. Houston, would you like a few minutes to rebut anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the big picture, I'd ask for your support on the annexation, support on the change of zone, support of the annexation agreement. This is a good development for the city of Lincoln. It's at low cost. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's unfortunate that we got lost in the chaff of this appeal, but I thought it was important to raise the issue. And first for me, I've never seen this arise where an adjacent property owner had this concern. I thought it was appropriate to bring it to you. I apologize for the delay, but I think it's an important issue to address. And with that, I'd ask your support for all items on your agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think that takes us to the end of our public hearing.
Yes, it does. We can move into our voting session now. Ordinance's third reading, item 7A, is text amendment 18009, amending Lincoln Municipal Code, section 27.72.110, to create exceptions to the height requirements in all zoning districts where private schools are permitted to allow private school light poles to exceed the district height limit up to a height of 100 feet. Introduced by Christiansen.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, a motion by Councilman Christiansen, and a second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion? Is that we in a, we are in a voting session? Yep. Would you call the roll, please?
Gayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 7B is amending chapter 12.08 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to parks, general rules and regulations by amending section 12.08.00 to add a definition for park flyer model aircraft, adding section 12.08.295 to allow the operation of park flyer model aircraft in designated areas. Introduced by Christiansen.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, a motion by Councilman Christiansen, and a second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion? Councilman Christiansen?
This is a fun thing.
Yeah, can you, can you do that again? I built a lot of model airplanes when I was younger, and I could not afford to buy and fly the big ones. I've looked at a lot of them last week, and this is a good thing. Yes, I'm going to, yeah, up in the air, junior birdman. Other comments or discussion of this motion?
If we see you two in the parks flying-
Yes, dogfighting.
Yeah.
Yeah, you will.
You're the media.
Jersey, would you call the roll before this gets any sillier?
Gayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Resolutions first reading are items 8A through D. Ordinance's first reading are items 9A through C. Our pending list are items 11A through D. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time.
This is the open-mic portion, or open mic, the public comment portion of our agenda. If you'd like to speak before the city council, please come forward. We do have two microphones. Please come forward, sign in, and we will be happy to hear what you have to say. I will be happy to hear what you have to say. Let me speak for myself.
Hi, my name is Trish Waunchill. I live at 1421 South 26th Street. I'm here today because I was shocked and appalled when I heard Councilmember Camp's comments at the end of the public comment section of the last city council meeting. When a 13-year-old bravely comes up here to speak to her elected officials, and one of them says that she just wasted her breath and she should go do something else, what message does that send to our youth? This is not surprisingly the same city council member who walked out of a public hearing on term limits, doesn't think he needs to hear what his constituents have to say. In his comments, two weeks ago, Councilmember Camp not only complained about the existence of public comments on issues citizens of Lincoln care about, like safe storage, he continued on to then characterize these comments and the 50 citizens who showed up on safe storage as a mob, that was nevertheless just a small group, which you can't have it both ways, trying to dictate to the majority, wet city laws will keep kids safe. Clearly, Councilmember Camp is out of touch with public opinion. According to the Pew Research Center, 66%, including gun owners, 66% of the public, believe that gun owners should lock up their guns. Just like among the 50 commenters one month ago, those who think gun owners should be required to lock up their guns outnumber those two to one. The people who spoke here one month ago were perfectly representative of the broader public opinion. What was characterized as mob rule, most Americans proudly hail as democracy in action. The real minority group was a small number who showed up in opposition that day. And that, in the statement two weeks ago, Councilmember Camp mischaracterized that 13-year-old's public commentary and twisted it into an argument that only people who, the only people who don't safely store their guns are criminals. In the same Pew Research Center- public commentary and twisted it into an argument that only people who, the only people who don't safely store their guns are criminals. In the same Pew Research Center poll, they found that 30 percent of gun owners with children in the homes actually self-report that they don't lock up their guns. Now, I think that should be criminal, but they're not all just criminals, and it's not that small of a group, although they are the minority. You see, the group opposing the bill, who are vastly outnumbered, they don't represent the average gun owner, and from their testimony, they are even more the minority in that they are most likely to be gun hoarders, the small group of gun owners who have five or more guns. Next time a large group of citizens comes together to have dialogue over safe storage, I want Councilmember Christiansen to ask them, to ask those members, how many of them have five or more guns in their house and how they store them. So this small, this minority group, the small group of gun extremists, their voice is amplified by a gun lobby, and it amplifies their voice through cash from gun manufacturers. And they want to tell Lincoln what we should do. That's not fair, and that's not democratic. This amplification of their message and the violence and threats, no doubt many of you have received, as I have, is from a radical group of mostly white men. They're buttressed by the cold hard cash of the NRA, and that's what is anti-democratic. So Councilmember Kemp, I think you're out of touch with public opinion. Statements to, and your statements two weeks ago were anti-democratic. I implore all of you to listen when your constituents show up and support safe storage and then to act. One other thing I wanted to say is, that 13-year-old who is so brave, she's been here two, at two public comment sections, Camille Yakino, today's her 14th birthday, so happy birthday, Camille. Otherwise, she'd probably be here, and I think she'll be back, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kemp?
Yes, Ms. Waunchill?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, two questions. Are you a member of Betsy Riot?
No.
Are you a member of Antifa?
No.
Okay.
Are you a member of Betsy Riot?
Hold on, a little bit of...
Is that it?
Yeah. Next testifier, please.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Zuckerman, Z-U-C-K-E-R-M-A-N. I've written down my address for you. Some of you might already seen this, but I wanted to share with the City Council and with our neighbors watching at home that a judge in Seattle threw out the NRA's case against their safe storage ordinance. There seems to be an undue fear that the multimillion-dollar NRA is going to come after Lincoln if we have a similar ordinance, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about that tonight. Seattle's safe storage ordinance will fine gun owners for improper storage, with fines increasing if a minor excesses a weapon, such as the kindergartner in Grand Island who brought a gun to school last spring, or an at-risk individual, such as someone experiencing suicidal ideation. The fine is greater still if that gun is used to harm someone or is used in a crime. This would hold gun owners liable when their irresponsibility results in the death of a child like the Atkins grandson, Matthew. While the case was thrown out on a technicality, I wanted to share some excerpts from the city's case. They, meaning the NRA, have not alleged an organizational purpose to promote such unsafe storage, nor could they plausibly do so since the advice they give their members is to make sure their guns are responsibly stored so as to be inaccessible to others, especially children. Is consistent with and not threatened by the ordinance. What he is saying is the NRA does not have a leg to stand on because they also embrace the idea of safe storage. He continued, the city attorney continues, saying, "We don't see how the NRA could have a standing in the future challenges to safe storage in Seattle and other jurisdictions short of them changing their mission to advise their members to keep guns openly accessible to children. That would be truly irresponsible." We also have laws about not leaving other things openly accessible to children: cigarettes, alcohol, swimming pools, prescription drugs. We want to keep all of our children in our community safe from harm and alive long enough for their brains to develop to make rational decisions, which is at age 20 or so. It's not at two, it's not at six, it's not at 16, which incidentally was the age of the shooter in North Carolina who murdered a classmate today. We should not be swayed by Seattle or by NRA lobbyists from Virginia who are paid to write editorials in our local paper. It's important to recognize that the ask for a safe storage ordinance is coming from community members. It's coming from grandparents, parents, educators, former military members. As I mentioned, today in North Carolina, a student was shot and killed in school. The superintendent of the Charlotte Mecklesburg School District said he didn't, quote, "Know where a young person gets a gun, but we're going to look into all of these things and make sure it never happens again. Guns used in school shootings come from home. Children cannot access them legally. The thing to do is to have a safe storage ordinance that prevents this from happening anywhere in the country." But I live in Lincoln, and I care about our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Zuckerman, do you belong to Betsy Riot?
I am definitely not that cool.
And how about Antifa?
Also not that cool.
Those are no's.
Yes, those are no's.
Thank you.
Ms. Neal?
Hi. Oh, you know my name by now. That's good.
Yes.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity, and I too am here to address John Kemp's performance over the last few weeks. As has been stated, you blasted at a young teenager who came here, which I find unconscionable, saying you don't want special interest groups to be coming in again and again. Well, when you give the NRA letters that come your way more credence than you give to your own constituents, you're going to see us again and again until you decide to investigate and potentially establish a safe storage gun law in Lincoln. I also want to speak today about your hypocrisy. You're perfectly willing to accept those NRA letters, but, I'm repeating myself, but I'm willing to accept testimony from your constituents and fellow citizens because it does not agree with your own held opinions. In late September, you refused to stay seated during an open-mic session because you did not want to hear any, quote, "political talk." As soon as a man started to speak, an older gentleman, about Mayor Beitler's accomplishments while in office, you jumped up and left the room. I frankly was laughing and wondering if the council could even continue at that point. Again, hypocrisy, because your own tenure will exceed five terms soon, 19 years for those of you that are math-challenged. Kemp, you need a refresher on certain amendment rights, and you're asking the question you asked while ago of two people is one of those rights. Their membership in or out of any organization should not be asked of them at a situation like that. It's against either the First, Fifth, or Fourteenth Amendment. You're supposed to be a lawyer. You should know this stuff. The right to associate, the right to petition, the right to assemble are all part of our amendments. There is more than the Second Amendment in the Constitution. The right to petition the government for redress of grievances works with the right of assembly by allowing people to join together and seek change from the government. When you criticize speakers from groups such as Nebraskans Against Gun Violence, you're trying to stifle their right to petition, all because you have a difference of opinion. As a citizen, you have a right to your opinion. As a member of the council, you're obligated to listen to the citizens before the council. When you cannot do this, you should resign.
May I ask you, are you a member of Betsy Riot?
I am not answering any question like that.
And the same on Antifa?
And the same on Antifa, though I am anti-fascist.
Oh, so you are a member of Antifa?
Ms...
No.
Next, let's get back to the open testimony.
Need to understand the difference, sir.
Hi.
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 I'm Judy King.
Hi, Ms. King.
Hi. And address 1261 Fall Creek Road. Respectfully, Councilman Kemp, I was appalled when I heard you got up and left a meeting because it was too political regarding the ballot initiative. And before I go any further, is your mom part of Betsy Riot or Antifa?
I think we just continue.
Oh, okay.
Not like my mother.
Let's...
I didn't know, because a lot of women are, you know, so...
Let's, let's...
We would like to know.
I'll be a little bit respectful and continue with your prepared statement, please.
I believe that government by the people and for the people works best when its citizens feel free to come before their elected representatives and voice their concern, regardless of the nature of those concerns or how many times they feel the need to get up and express those concerns. The ability is, that ability is the foundation upon which this country has been founded. We elect you to sit there and represent us. That means respectfully listening to our voice regarding, regardless of whether you agree or disagree. I don't expect you to like or agree with everything that I have to say, but I do expect you to listen to me. Your comments on the 10-15-18 meeting and the political rhetoric, such as police state and your comment about Cuba and not wanting the police coming in force, and the comment about something about a mob appeal at the federal level, is far beyond any of the conversations we have had with you at this mic regarding safe storage. You also said you wouldn't do any legislation regarding safe storage. People came from several separate groups and also individually just to tell their story. And I believe you said there were about 50 people. If a group of people come to this open-mic, it's not a mob. It's a group of concerned citizens giving you information so you can do more research and have discussions and be inquiring. We expect you to do your job.
Are you a member of Betsy Riot?
Your business if I was or wasn't. And I don't even know what it is.
So let's try to limit the interaction. This is a public comment portion of the program. Members of the public are allowed to come and address the City Council. Would anyone else in the chamber like to do that tonight? I move adjournment.
Did not answer my question.
You have a motion by Councilman Christiansen, a second by Councilwoman Lamb, and he's not really required to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then I'm not either.
Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.